Okay. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting. Today, July 21st, 2025. This meeting is being conducted in person with the public welcome. It may also be available via remote participation. You will notice that there is Brendan and Alva sitting at the table. So Peter Phippen is away on vacation. And Annie Cameron is joining us remotely. Thank you, Annie, for joining remotely. So we want to just start.
Do the reminder right here?
Reminder, I thought I just did. Reminder, this meeting is being recorded and broadcasted by 1623 Studios. Our first appointment is for the Quarterly Meeting, which starts at 7:00 PM. So I'm going to have Brendan Zubricki, our Town Administrator, provide a report for his July 5th through July 18th.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item on my report tonight has to do with the recycled asphalt product that was put down in the parking lot at the Centennial Grove. Told the Board that I would bring an update to this meeting. The DPW has checked in with the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. The removal of the product will be required, but it's not an immediate need. It's not an urgent need. And the plan is for the DPW to take some of it and store that in their bins at the DPW yard. And then we'll work with our volunteer coordinator into the fall to get the rest of it out of there. But we've worked out a solution.
So can I just ask you? Because I know we have a couple of roads that are private roads. And I'm wondering if these could be used for those dirt private roads that have big, huge potholes in them.
If someone wanted that material, they could ask the town. But it would not be up to the town to do any permitting that might be necessary. For instance, if that road ran adjacent to a wetland or something like that. But we would gladly have them take it off of the site.
That sounds wonderful. And I'm only asking because I go down a road that happens to be very bumpy. Okay, next.
Can I ask a question? How do I indicate that I want to ask a question?
Oh, I'm so sorry, Annie.
Maybe we should just check every time.
Every time, I should be checking.
So just on this wrap removal, I just want to know, who's going to be supervising the removal? And how will we know what done looks like? Done and compliant with whatever laws or regulations are required?
The Water Department is the regulatory agency that's requiring it to be removed in accordance with, you know, the agreement from the Department of Environmental Protection. I have it on my calendar to make sure that it's moving along. And I'm working directly with the volunteer coordinator, Mr. Dan Mayer, who has already started to reach out to individuals within the community who may want to take some of this and have the means to take it. So it's going to be a group effort, but we do have a target of the fall. And done looks like getting it back down to the dirt or gravel surface that was there prior to the material coming in. The DPW did, though, patch some low areas with that material even before any of this started. So I think that the superintendent knows what the status of the parking lot looked like prior to the most recent addition of the wrap. And there's a way to get back to that.
All right, and just one follow-up question. If folks are going to be coming to remove it, will that be organized in some ways that they're not there during camp hours or camp drop off or pickup? I mean, who's going to coordinate that? And I'm sorry to be a nooch about this, but this whole situation is frustrating.
We don't really want to have that happen. At this point in time, we don't, even the DPW, I don't know when they're going to start. But they could certainly do it after 1:00. They could work on it. I mean, they're just going to be working with one machine and a dump truck off to the side. Because it's really all we have. So I think we'll be able to work it out.
Okay.
The next item on my report is concerning the street excavation materials that have been accumulating at the DPW yard. And the Board of Public Works has announced that they plan to switch their solid waste consultant to a new consultant, Weston and Sampson. And the superintendent is going to be putting me directly in touch with the engineer at Weston and Sampson, who will be developing a proposal to manage the job. And so that proposal will include their engineering time in any sampling or anything like that that needs to be done, and assistance with bidding the job out. And the hope would be that the town meeting in November could vote to execute that engineering agreement, engage Weston and Sampson to actually do the engineering work, the cost estimation, so that when we come to the annual town meeting in May, the town meeting will have a very good idea of the cost and what the project will entail. And there would be a second request for funding, that being the actual funding, to move the material to a disposal facility.
So we have this information before the deadline for getting the items for warrant?
We will, yeah. Yeah, I just haven't been put in touch with the individual yet. But I hope that will happen this week.
Annie, any questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, that's it for my report tonight.
You had other things in your report that I wanted to talk to you about.
We can, but we haven't discussed individual items that I hadn't starred in the past. We could bring it up under other business. But I would say that if it involves something where a decision needs to be made, we should list it again for the next meeting. Do you want to handle other items now, Madam Chair? Because then Annie could bring those things up.
Sure. Okay, so we're going to start with the approval for the weekly warrant.
No, I mean items that couldn't be anticipated.
So we can move right down to the items that couldn't be anticipated? Annie, do you want to bring up those items?
Yeah, I just, and actually Brendan, I could actually talk to you probably. But the Microsoft update, I just didn't know what tools we weren't leveraging out of the Office 365 contract. So I can talk to you about that separately.
The issue there is, we were under the understanding, for everyone's information, that Microsoft Office 365 was the only way to keep our on-premises products in play. And the on-premises products are necessary in some cases because the online products don't have all of the features of the Microsoft Office suite, depending on the program, like mail merges, things like that. And we would, even though we went and got additional money in the FY '26 budget to anticipate an upgrade from the G1 license to the G3 license, and the G3 allows the download of the on-premises products, it will be much less expensive now that we know that Microsoft is continuing to offer an on-premises product. Going from G1 to G3 just to get that doesn't make any sense because for about $400 per server, and we only have two servers, we'd get five more years out of the on-premises product versus something like $20 a month per person for 60 people for five years. You can see what I'm getting at. There really isn't a benefit there.
So what I saw, sorry, Annie, I'm going to jump in here. What I saw was we're getting Microsoft 21?
24.
Oh, 24.
We put 21 on as a test, and it's working fine. And then we're going to move to 24 at like $400 or $500 a server versus going from the G1 license to the G3 license for most of our users and paying a monthly fee. It's going to go way beyond.
Okay, nope, that makes sense. Annie?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, you know, in terms of the Microsoft Office suite, what, I mean, this may be a bigger conversation. But what do we have now? And what were we going to have?
We have Office Professional Plus.
Pardon?
We have Office Professional Plus 2016. We are going to be moving to Office 2024 Plus. So we're not going to lose anything. I don't know of any program that we're going to gain by paying the G3 license that we would actually use. In fact, the programs in the suite that we already have are not all fully utilized.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
My next question was on the DPW, the supervisory job description. I went in and made some edits, unfortunately, in your document that you shared. But it marks guest contributor, whatever. And I just wanted to know if there was any effort on the part of the Board of Public Works to do some sort of a gap analysis of what certifications would be ideal? What do they have now and what do they need? So I mean, it's just kind of an opportunity to kind of look at the department as a whole.
Yep.
Make an assessment of what they have, what they need, what they're looking for this person. And so I made some edits in the document. You can take a look.
So what they said at their last meeting is they're not prepared to comment. The Chair of the Board of Public Works took the existing position description, made some edits to it, provided it to me. I made some more edits to it, and he indicated he agreed with that. Then he was going to bring it back to the whole board, which he did at their last meeting. But they need more time to consider it. And so what we were hoping to do would be to get the consensus view of the Board of Public Works on a document, bring it back to the Selectmen as Personnel Board, and discuss it in detail at a future meeting.
Perfect, thank you.
And, sorry, I just want to add to that. In discussing it, so if we felt that something really should be added, we can at that time address it, is that correct?
Oh, yes. I mean, so it hasn't come to you yet because you don't really want to work on a document until you know what the department that it's going to be involved with has thought about the potential changes. And then there may be some back and forth even after the Personnel Board discusses it for the first time or the second time. And with respect to position descriptions, every description that gets revised needs the approval, those revisions need the approval of the Personnel Board, which is the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. Annie?
Regarding dredging, I know you're meeting with the folks this week. And I just, I talked to you about this briefly. But, you know, what is the economic impact to local businesses? You know, what are the risks of this not being done properly? And if there's any way of the collective business community that is dependent on the river to kind of quantify the impact of this poorly done work? I think that's an effective point, information point to bring to the table.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, the project only happened because we made a focal point of the benefits to the economy and, of course, the public safety aspect. And after we have the meeting on Friday, I hope to be able to come to you and say they have a proposal to do something more and not just leaving it the way it is. I agree that if they don't say that, and we will bring that up at the meeting. In fact, they're very well-versed with it because that's what helped to get the thing funded. But if they don't say that there's more to do, then we really will need to use those elements with our legislative delegation.
Great, that's all I had. Thank you, sorry to interrupt.
Nope, that's good. Annie, so Brendan, that's the 25th you have in that meeting?
Yes.
And it has been invited to our...
So it's myself and Selectmen Phippen, the Harbor Master, the Fire Chief from a public safety standpoint, as well as Senator Tar, Representative Ferrante, and then representatives of our two federal senators and our congressman.
Okay, so they have been invited?
They'll be there, yes.
Okay, great. I think that's important that they are there to hear it directly? Okay.
Now, we do have someone in the audience with a request under licensing. You'll see that on the agenda, we've got listed the one-day wine and malt license. Lindsay Bergeron, Rivers Bend Tented Area, 35 Dodge Street, for use on Saturday, September 13th between 5:00 and 8:00. And apparently, there are a couple of other applications that she had. She was working with Pam in our office on that. Pam is out for a little while. One of the events is in September, so I don't think that needs to be brought up. But another one of the events is in August. And I think it would be worthwhile to bring that up tonight and then have it ratified by the Board at the next meeting.
Sounds good.
And can you describe the August 2nd event for the Board's benefit?
I can't because you have my paperwork.
All right, why don't you grab that?
You didn't write it on your arm.
Okay, so August 2nd, Saturday, from 5:00 to 6:00 PM. I'm looking for an amplified guitarist on the patio with an amplified singer for cocktail hour.
So you said for 5:00 to 6:00 PM?
Yes, correct.
And...
On the patio.
On the patio. So it's in...
But that's over and above what your existing license would allow? That's why?
Yep.
Can you tell us a little bit more about the status of the amplification that's planned for that?
Yeah, sure. So it will be, it's a solo guitarist. He will have an amp. I'm assuming it's not going to be a huge amp because it's one person. He will stand on the patio and play the guitar. There will be a singer for just a couple songs. But the rest of it will just be a guitarist. And it'll be between 5:00 and 6:00 PM.
Does the Board need any other information before you decide on this? Again, it will have to come back before you as an agenda item listed. But there isn't another meeting before the event. And you could vote tonight, subject to listing and ratification at your next meeting, if you're interested.
Yeah, I'm fine because she does have this yearly entertainment license, correct?
Yes.
Yes, she does.
So this is really not too far outside?
And what that says is, in a case where something doesn't fit within it, they should come and talk to the Selectmen, and that's what she's doing.
Annie, I'm going to ask you for your opinion on this. Is it okay to have it come back for us to ratify it on the 4th of August?
Sure.
So I would recommend that the Board vote to approve the entertainment license for August 2nd from 5:00 to 6:00 PM, as described by the applicant, subject to ratification by the Board and listing it on agenda at their meeting of August 4th, 2025.
And that will require a roll call vote?
Yes.
So moved?
Inga Harrow, yes?
Cameron, yes.
And then maybe you handle the other one that's already on the agenda?
And then we have another one that's for Rivers Bend Tented Area, 35 Dodge Street, for Saturday, September 13th, between the hours of 5:00 PM and 8:00 PM. And this is a full wedding or what is this?
Yes, so this is a tented wedding on the lawn, dinner. It's just going to be dinner. And then the main entertainment will be inside the building. However, that one existing application that didn't make it in tonight was for, let me just see. It's multifaceted, but it's under the tent with someone being able to give toasts for dinner, a keyboard, and a saxophone for the dinner service.
That's the one that is on the agenda?
No, that's the one, oh, no. The one-day wine and malt license is on the agenda, yes.
Right. So that's all they're talking about? Because the other one is coming back before them because it's not until September.
But it's for the same date, just so you know.
Oh, I see.
Yes, they kind of, well...
Yes, so the one that's on the agenda is just a wine and malt. And that other one that she just discussed will be coming back?
And just so you know, I do have the tent permit, in case that's a question.
So I would recommend that the Board vote to grant the one-day wine and malt license, 35 Dodge Street, for use on Saturday, September 13th, 2025, between 5:00 and 8:00.
Second, or so moved?
Second.
Roll call vote, Inga Harrow, yes?
Cameron, yes?
Okay, so then we will see you in August with your next license?
Then I can prep the rest of it.
We need it back on, I'm just waiting.
That's fine, thank you.
Thank you.
Selectmen Cameron, is it okay for me to sign for you with respect to the licenses that were granted tonight?
Yes, but I have instructions in the chat.
And actually, you're going to, for these ones, you're going to be back Monday or...
I'm back Saturday, yeah.
Let's see if this one is...
But I trust you, Brendan.
All right, we'll just do it.
No hearts, okay?
Annie, I don't know if you heard Joan, but if you could, when you're not talking, put yourself on mute and then unmute yourself.
It's the breathing, huh?
It's the breathing. So it's 6:24. Do you want to move into other business or do we want to?
Sure.
There's only...
That's all that's left, right?
Two people from the Quarterly, so. So moving on to other business, we have the approval of the weekly warrant and the amount of 1,000, sorry,
So moved?
Roll call vote for this? Inga Harrow, yes?
Cameron, yes.
Approval of the minutes for Selectmen's July 7th, 2025, open meeting?
So moved?
Roll call vote?
Cameron, yes.
Inga Harrow, yes? We did receive, next on our list is we have a correspondence from George Mullin requesting consideration of his proposal to improve the parking situation at Town Landing. Annie, do you have any comments about this? I don't know if you had a chance to review that?
Yeah, I did. And I guess I wonder, how do you handle the, you know, where this goes? Because I thought there were some decent proposals, but I am not down at the Town Landing, so I can't like look at it. And I just wondered, you know, I'm assuming that the Chief is going to have some thoughts on this and other folks might want to lean on it.
Sometimes it's worthwhile to have a site visit, which could be done at any point in time. And Annie, when you're back in town and when Peter's back in town, I can try to coordinate that, if that would be helpful.
I did myself, I didn't send anybody any pitches. I did get out and take pitches to kind of see, you know, positives, negatives. All three of us have been in town a while. And I will say that I know that even with, there's not enough space to put a whole bunch of more parking. And I think that it would be good for us to table it to our future meetings so that we can visit it and discuss it with the Chief. The Chief is here, the Harbor Master/Chief is here. We could have him talk, but I think maybe we could postpone...
You could have him at the site visit to point out anything that he wanted to say.
Are you in agreement with that, Annie?
Yeah, and can I just ask one kind of noochy question?
Yep.
He did note that the dumpster for the restaurant was on town property. Is there some sort of agreement there or what is that all about?
There's no agreement for that. I noticed that he said that. Maybe it was slid back there the last time they emptied it. But no, there's no agreement for that.
It does look, so I'm not even positive where the line is because I looked on GIS and I couldn't tell you where the grassy area is because it's, you know, it doesn't show that.
You can put an aerial photograph up.
I still, oh, aerial, I didn't look, I didn't see aerial.
Yeah, I'll take a look at it and make sure.
It is definitely in the grass now.
All right, I'll look at it and talk to Cory.
The parking spot is there. And I, so that's why I think a site visit would be the best thing.
Thank you.
So we'll table that. I don't know, BC, if you can just let us know if the August 4th or a future one would be a better meeting?
Yeah, it depends on whether you can get together in advance of that.
Yep, exactly. And next thing on our list is to review correspondence from Chip Eltinsir, resident of the town of Great Barrington, Massachusetts, concerning the assertion about potential state legislation and for alternative calculation of appropriation for members of regional school districts. I see that we have some FinCom members here. I know that we had shared the document with them. Does anybody, Jody, do you have any comments from your fellow members?
We have just received the document prior to our last FinCom meeting. So I've shared the document with others. I've gotten feedback from two members who weren't in favor of support, but we haven't had a full discussion at the committee level.
Is that something you will be discussing at a FinCom meeting? Because I'd like to hear, I mean, of course, it all sounds wonderful, but I want to know really what's the details on it.
Correct, I think we want to take some time to do some analysis on it. I mean, I think he's looking at valuations, strictly at valuations in each property. I'd want to have a conversation at the table. I think our next meeting is more of a prep for our following meeting with you. But we may discuss that a little bit. But I also, I was interested in what other communities he sent the letter to for support and if he only sent it to the communities who are struggling. And I thought maybe we should reach out to him and kind of disconcern a little bit of the work that he has done. He did send us a kind of a quickie, dark and dirty worksheet, which, you know, looks really encouraging from an Essex standpoint. But I think there may be a little bit more to it.
I agree. I think that that's great. If you can just make sure that we know that, so that if we feel like we need to show up, we may add us to your meeting.
Right, no problem.
Annie, do you have any questions? I don't know if you...
Yeah, I guess my issue with what he sent is that he only has one sponsor. That kind of was a red flag for me. And I had asked Brendan if we would share that letter with Ferrante and Tar's offices to see why they wouldn't. I'm assuming they are aware of it and what they know about it. And also, you know, just two people in town or in the district who have kind of expressed maybe like or similar concerns. Mark Lynch has very strong opinions about the regional formula. And he thinks we should take the student count out of it. So he's somebody that I was going to forward this to. And also Anne Harrison... somebody that I was going to forward this to, and also Anne Harrison and maybe Sarah Malish, just to get their thoughts, but I do think if we talk about it, we want, I want to engage folks in Manchester.
So, do you want me to send this on to our rep and our senator? As the board, Annie and I talked about it, but I want to make sure that the board is okay with that, because this came to us, we didn't ask for this, this came to us from a third party.
No, I think it's a good idea to get the reps to give us an idea of what they feel their, their opinion is on this bill, red flags or?
And why didn't they support it?
Whatever, would be great.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you, Jody. Okay, next we have to review and approve the request from the Friends of the Essex Elementary School to hold its 17th Happy as a Clam 5K race, seven, race in the town roads. I don't see any dates, does anybody know what the dates are?
It's in the folder there.
Okay, sorry about that, okay, so this would be for the Friends of the Essex Elementary School is hoping to hold its 17th Annual Happy as a Clam Race Walk and Fund Dashes, fundraiser on Friday, September 12th, beginning at 5:00 PM, with the race starting and finishing at the Essex Elementary School. As in previous years, the race would use the roads surrounding the school, including Weston Ave, Belcher and Story Street. For 2025, the race course will not change from previous years. For, take a motion to approve the Happy, the 17th Annual Happy as a Clam 5K Race?
The key element here is that you're approving the race going over town roads.
I'm sorry, approving the race going over town roads on September 12th, 2025, starting at 5:00 PM.
So moved.
Row call vote, Inga Harrow, yes?
Cameron, yes.
The next item on the, the other business is to ratify the chairman's signature on a notice for a betterment agreement with a property at 18 Wise, sorry, 18 John Wise Ave, Mark Mulgrew and Cheryl Bagshaw.
This is, this involves a program that the town has had for a while, it allows people to either upgrade a septic system or connect to the sewer system at a low interest rate, it's called the Community Septic Management Loan Program. The town borrows the money and repays it with payments that are made by the individual residents on their, when they repay their quarterly tax bills.
So it goes on their quarterly tax bills, no, I think that this is, it's a state benefit, I guess, that is allotted to those with septic and sewer connections, correct?
Yes.
So I think this is, I have mentioned it to the Council on Aging, because I do think it's something that, you know, if somebody has to do improvements, it's a benefit. And so I will take a motion to approve the betterment for the property at 18 John Wise with a row call vote?
So moved.
Inga Harrow, yes?
Cameron, yes.
Okay, we are down to the, any other items not reasonably anticipated, do you have anything else?
Nothing beyond what I raised earlier.
Okay, and I did want to ask you regarding the, do we want to mention regarding the liquor license being relinquished, or would that wait?
I mean, there's no need to, just for information, Vitabella had an all alcohol pouring license, and the business has closed, and the owner of the business, not the property, the owner of the business Vitabella that was located at the property relinquished the liquor license back to the town.
And then the last thing I wanted to just ask you is regards to the letter regarding Island Road and the Maas Restor, Marsh Restoration, Salt Marsh Masturbation Monitoring, is this something that we need to vote on and just be aware of?
That was already discussed by the board, where the board agreed that if any type of grant program came up to help replace that culvert, that we should support it, it's not a grant application of the town, we're just supporting an application made by the trustees.
Wonderful, okay, it's 6:37.
I have one.
Okay, sorry, Annie.
Sorry, I just have a follow up on that, the liquor license, when you said that the owner relinquished it back to the town, does that mean that the building itself no longer holds that license, that it's now under the control of the town and it's fungible, can go to whoever applies for it?
That's correct, so if the owner of the restaurant business is also the owner of the property, that's kind of one in the same, and they would normally try to go and do a transfer so that the license remains with, say, the next owner of the, of the property, who opens a different business name. In this case, you had a tenant on property owned by a landlord, and the, the tenant and the landlord did not work out any kind of a transfer, the tenant left the premises and decided, and which is their sole decision, to relinquish the license, in this case, the property itself didn't have a liquor license, the owner of the property, that is.
So this means it's now available for the owner of that property if they wanted to?
It's available to anyone.
Okay.
And in fact, we have reviewed what is available, and there are actually two all alcohol pouring licenses available now in the town of Essex.
That sounds very Wild West to me.
I'm sorry, that sounds what?
Sounds very Wild West, but probably not.
You know, we are Massachusetts. Okay, so, now that we, is there anything else, I'm looking for more stuff, no, I'm going to move to the, the quarterly department heads meeting? And I see three, so I'm so happy, and do I see anybody online, I can't see that yet.
I'm gonna look.
Annie, I see five. Nope. Okay.
You could do public comment first if you want.
Oh, we could do public comment, is there, I'm going to start with online, is there anybody online that would like to present public comment? Hearing nobody, I'm going to move to the room, is there anybody in the room that would like to provide us public comment?
Ruth Perrine, 15 Lefkin Street, my public comment is regarding one of the agenda items, there was a bullet on reconsidering the Town Landing, which I know that you're planning on doing a site visit, so I know that there is no real discussion at the table tonight, but I caution the board when making those decisions, clearly we know that if we change the parking spots, it's going to cost money to do, currently the parking is tight. I believe this is just an effort for somebody that may be parked inappropriately and, you know, feels that they were justified, but parking is limited as it is, it's tight, it's cramped, we don't want to cram any more cars in there, so just be cautious when you're doing your site visit and discussing that agenda item, thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Okay, and now we will move to the quarterly boards, I'm going to pick on, on Jody, so that we can get her to get over it as quickly as possible.
Well, thanks, Alva.
Huh, I love you.
I love you too. This is my favorite meeting.
I know that.
Economic development, we continue to do some placemaking projects, the boat planters have been completed and have been placed and will be filled by my mystery angel volunteers with plant material. We are waiting for our landscape team to come in to do some causeway maintenance, it's a little ragged out there right now, again, just to remind people, we've had to employ a private contractor to keep the pocket parks weeded and weed whacked, et cetera, I hope in the future that changes back to the town, but at the moment, that's where that stands. Our project at the Grove continues with the bath house being framed up in the same way that the pavilion was, and we appreciate Dan Mayer and his team of volunteers who continue to beautify that, that space and make it fully a rental opportunity. We have our quarterly meeting coming up with the chamber next week. I want to continue to remind people that we will continue to look for new revenue opportunities, and one of those, I know that 30 Apple Street is still on the agenda for the school to look at as a site, but if we do retain that, the EDC was very interested in having the town look at over 55 housing, the housing market is still very tight, and our seniors are constantly looking for opportunities to stay in town, and there are very few opportunities once you sell your property and get out from under either the taxes or the maintenance, and I do believe that the 30 Apple Street provides an opportunity there as well as some affordable housing, so that's a possibility. Any questions on EDC?
Next week quarterly, Chamber meeting? Is it a Essex Chamber meeting?
That's the quarterly meeting we've been having with the Chamber officers.
Oh, in your office, okay, that's the other one, all right, thank you, I just wanted to make sure I edited my calendar. Okay, Annie, do you have any questions?
Nope.
Okay, Finance Committee, we have just closed out our FY25, work is, continues, so we don't have final, final numbers. We are working on a more in-depth presentation and discussion with the Board of Selectmen at your August 4th meeting, so we'll report more then, hopefully, a little closer to a number of, the ballpark of where we might be for free cash, but that might be a little premature. Recently, we had a presentation from ClearGov, Brendan, Michaela and myself regarding budgeting software, I think as you're aware, we have been using spreadsheets as our budgeting software tool, and in our opinion, Brendan, myself and Michaela, that is no longer a tool that we want to manage our budget with. So we had a couple of investigatory calls with other software companies, there aren't many, and ClearGov is really in our lane for price point and what we're looking for. I think we had a very good presentation, we had a lot of questions about reporting and accessibility for department heads and being able to require certain data to be input, being able to lock data out, and then having some backend reporting on a weekly or monthly basis to measure the actual expenses to the budget expenses, and I believe that we're moving forward with this project at Fall Town Meeting.
So you're looking to have it for Fall Town Meeting?
Fall Town Meeting, so we'll.
Going to be implemented for Fall Town Meeting, or certainly after, or?
So ClearGov actually is willing to begin a conversion process now, I think there's a letter involved, Brendan?
Right, and it's written up in my report too, and so if the Finance Committee agrees, which you will determine on the 29th of this month, at the August 4th meeting, the Selectmen will be asked to consider signing a contract that's contingent upon appropriation by Town Meeting, ClearGov will assume the risk and set the town up for the software right away, and if the appropriation doesn't materialize, then they've done work at their own risk, but they've done this in many communities, and it works well.
And it will be prorated, so they'll do all the data mapping ahead of time?
That way you'll be able to actually use the software this November, December, when we actually go into the budgeting season.
And then would it be each department head would have to learn the software in order to do this?
It is, but it's very, it's very simple, it's really taking the line items in the budget, they'll be moved over to the software, which is the line items that they have in the accounting software now that they see on a weekly basis, and it will, we can then go down, so last year, we drilled down and asked them to provide some details in line items, and it's going to provide us that opportunity and a tool to help them to drill down into some of these things, contracts, subcontractors, what, the things that we're looking for, and they need help memorializing, so that makes budgeting more of a seamless process on an annual basis.
Annie, do you have any questions?
Oh.
Thank you.
Our liaison work continues with each department having a liaison, we will start our budgeting process again after we have the final close of books, but we will continue to work with department heads in their current FY26 budget cycle, with any, any struggles they're having or concerns, much like the Fire Department is looking forward at, you know, potentially adding a person. Again, going into that FY27 cycle, we do believe that our key budget driver will again be the school, we will continue with our numbers crunching group meetings that our tenant will be scheduled to go back in session for September, and of course, the Chip Elitzer letter from Great Barrington, we will be discussing the, his proposed change in apportionment formula.
Okay, thank you, so your meeting's on the 29th, thank you.
I think we're going to push it to the 30th because we have the, I need to get consensus with the board, but we have the chamber on the 29th.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
So before I go any further, I do want to let George, George, I'm sure you're here for your, your letter that you sent?
Yes, I apologize, I didn't know what time was appropriate.
That's okay, I just want to let you know that we have discussed it, we feel that we do need to do a site visit with the full board and take a look at it, and we'll put it on for our next August 4th meeting.
August 4th, if the site visit happens before then, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll talk to you then, thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome. Okay, let's see, I see the police chief, Mr. Tom, would you like to get up and tell us?
Good evening, how are you?
I'm good.
So I, I'll blend this into both the Police and Harbor Departments for recent achievements. Detective Edwards has completed two weeks of required detective training, we've been trying to get him into that class for some time now, and that's finally completed. We've acquired the second of three vehicles that were appropriated, it was a 2025 F-150, this truck is assigned to supervisors and harbor to trailer Marine 2 or move other harbor equipment, it's also used to move all of our other trailers and signboards, we will be ordering the third vehicle in the coming weeks to have in time for winter, there's roughly a three-month lead time on the production with the 2025 equipment and upfitting. Everything from the annual Town Meeting Glock sidearm equipment appropriation has been ordered, and we should be receiving that soon, we will qualify with those this September. On the harbor side, I was able to increase the Harbor Master roster from three to a total of 10, there are now two deputies, one oversees the Division of Law Enforcement, and one oversees the Division of Moorings and Aides to Navigation, and I do have an organizational chart that I can email you. The River has had regular coverage on the weekends, I've gone out a handful of times during the week on Marine One, and we've been logging the enforcement, we conducted We conducted one round of excise compliance at the marinas, and we will then compile a list of all moored vessels in the river. We'll get that to the assessor. Any questions on Section A?
No, I think I'm good. Annie, do you have any questions? Going with, no?
Any obstacles?
I'm good, sorry.
Sorry, you do have a question?
Nope. I think Tom's great. Great job, Tom.
Any obstacles? One officer has given his notice of resignation to take employment with another department. This vacancy may be an obstacle in the control of overtime and staffing, but starting in fiscal '26, we'll have a better handle on the line items with breaking apart what types of vacancies we're spending the overtime on. Additionally, one of the reserve officers will have limited availability over the next few months. He is getting married, and then he's expected to have a heavy workload at his full-time job upon his return, so that puts us down to just two reserves on paper. Any question on the obstacles?
None, thank you. Annie?
I did have a question about whether you do, I know that you're new in the position, but do you do exit interviews?
What was it?
Can you state that again?
Do you do exit, do you do exit interviews when someone leaves the position?
Did you do exit interviews?
We did not do an exit interview. We could, though. He, he's with us until the 3rd of August.
I mean, I would just think about it. It's, I think it's a good practice, but, you know, it's up to you. It's your department.
Yes. C, expectations for the coming quarter? Two expectations I have are in the ballpark of FinCom and Board of Selectmen. One of the goals that was covered in the chief's interviews was reviewing the department's rules and regulations under the strong chief statue. The rules haven't been updated since their inception several years ago. I plan to take bite-sized sections and go through the table of contents so that we can say we jointly have gone over and agree with what's in there and update and amend as necessary. I think we could tackle a few chapters at a time and have this completed within a few months. I also plan to show FinCom where our contractual time off overtime expenditures are heading. Like I said, this year, we've broken apart vacation time, sick time, typical incidental overtime, and other areas from one single light on that was difficult to track in the past. We will see exactly how much we're spending on vacation, how much on sick, et cetera. Any questions on the expectations?
No, that sounds good. DC, Anne?
I'm good. I'm just going to do thumbs up if I'm good, okay?
Long-term goals on the horizon? We'll continue to upgrade and systematically replace our fleet and equipment as needed, collaboratively with Board of Selectmen and FinCom. We're going to be looking into a long-term body-worn camera subscription service. The current cameras that we have were roughly 40% to 42% of the capacity on the server, and the existing cameras that we did purchase on the grant will no longer be supported by the beginning of 2028, so we are going to have to transition into a different product and server and storage solution, so we will be looking at that in terms of a capital request. Any concerns? No concerns at this time, other than the lack of reserves, but that's nothing new, and then the vacant full-time position. We have the job posted for that. And then, any recent grants? The only grant that we've been exploring, Officer Fadulo is exploring grants with Senator Tar's office to assist us in replacing Marine One. The FLIR, the radar, and other electronics are in a state of significant disrepair. They're 15 years old. They came with the boat when we got it. It may be a more cost-effective route to obtain a whole new vessel package with electronics for a fraction of the cost versus what the cost of electronics would be alone to replace and put them in an older vessel. Some of the grants have like a 10% match, so if the grant was for $100,000, the town would provide $10,000. I know we have some money in the Waterway Stabilization Fund. I've discussed with Brendan what that can and can't be used for, so there are some funds available if we do get that grant. Any questions?
Is that it?
That is it.
Thank you muchly.
Thank you.
Okay. Who would like to go next? I'm taking money. I'm just kidding. Brooke, would you like to come and give us a tax positives? Only tax positives?
Good evening. Is that a good level?
That's good.
So we've had a very extremely busy couple of weeks, actually month, with the end of one fiscal year and the beginning of another, so sort of been busy in the day-to-day. The hardest part was the two most complicated payroll weeks of the year, in particular the one last week where half the week was one, was at one rate, and half the week was at, not even half, part of the week was at one rate and part of the week was at another. So it was very complicated trying to keep that all in order. Today was a much better Monday than we had the last two, so that was a good thing. I would say now we can focus on going forward and getting to the other things that are very important, lots of reporting. I've spent a lot of time the last couple of weeks reconciling all the bank accounts, reconciling different receivable balances and all of that to get that to Michaela so that she can then reconcile with the GL. Now we have to do gateway reporting, some OPEB reporting that we have to do every other year, and I haven't done that before, so that will be an interesting project. I will be attending annual school next month, and I'm going to be, again, weighing two different things as I'm studying for and taking the collector certification and also starting treasurer classes at the same time, so that will be a little bit of a balancing act. I'm a little out of order here, but obstacles, I would say, same thing. Weighing priorities, I think, is the biggest obstacle that we face in my department, you know, reconciling one month, wrapping up that, but still having to keep up with the current month. July is a very busy tax month with, we have two different excise commitments that went, one went out earlier in the month, one is going out this week, as well as the first real estate tax bills of the year. So there's a lot going on, but we're keeping up with it pretty well, I think. Do you have any questions?
No. You will shout out if you find yourself not being able to keep up, correct?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Bob, would you like to come up and give us information on Essex Tech?
Yes, hi. How is everybody?
We are good.
Thank you for inviting me. Before I start, I just want to thank Mr. Zawicki, who helps me with a lot of this stuff. I know when I have a question about anything to do with budget or this or that, everything else, he's there, and I think we're very fortunate to have him. I'm going to put on my glasses so I can see what I'm doing here. This is my second year, finishing my second year as...
Bob, I'm going to interrupt you one second.
Yes, finishing my second year as school committee member for, for the tech. I'm going to do this in two parts. I'm going to do the previous year's 2024, '25 achievements and improvements, and then what we, what we're facing for next year. The Larkin Cottage was finished within the last few months. It's named after Mrs. Larkin, who was a graduate of the school back in the '40s. She became a nurse and was, and went to, was killed in an airplane crash during the, during World War II. It's a beautiful facility. It's named after a lovely woman who did a lot for the, for the school back in her day. So if you get a chance to stop by and look at it, I would highly recommend it.
And Bob, what are they going to be putting into the building?
The Larkin Building? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Yeah, what are they, is...
I'm half-deaf, too.
What is the building going to be used for?
I was just going to get into that very quickly. It's a historical museum for the school, events and meetings, office space, and probably a lot of other things that we don't even know what it'll be. It's so new, but it's, it's, it's worth stopping by to see. Another big plus for the school last year was that almost $10 million in grants. We have a fantastic grants writer, and she wrote a bunch of grants that we use for students and staff, professional development, mostly materials and supplies. Really doesn't go towards capital expenses at all, but it's for, it's for, as I said, professional development. Also, we complete, we completed the, a 10,000 square foot addition to the animal science building. The animal science building, let me just interject this. I grew up in the '60s and '70s on a farm in North Andover, Massachusetts, a dairy farm and a turkey farm. To me, when I started this a couple of years, I knew that the Aggie was much more, we used to refer to it as the Aggie back then, much more different than it was back then, but it's a fantastic school. Many of the students that graduate from the tech go on to four-year colleges. It's, it's a wonderful place. Anyways, back to the addition to the, to the animal science building. Animal science today, it's not just farming and, and milking cows and plucking turkeys and all those things I did. It's companion animals, veterinarian science, veterinary science, equine science, ethics and laws of all, everything that has to do with the whole area of animal science. Again, another, another facility that's new, interesting, worth, worth a visit. As far as next year coming up, well, I shouldn't say next year, it's already here, '25, '26. There's a new, I don't know if you're aware of it, but there's a new lottery system for admissions to the school. I don't think, this is only my, my opinion, I don't think it's going to be as complex for us at the Aggie as it is for some of the other schools around the state, because Dr. Ritchio and her staff have done a great, great job as far as reviewing the applications and finally making final decisions about admittance. So, but it is, it is, it's, it's new, it's going to have an effect. It doesn't go into effect until the, not this year, but the next year, '26, '27, '26, '27. Another challenge is space, always looking for space. I think right now, in the irregular daytime attendance for students in 9 through 12, I think it's somewhere around 1,400, 1,500, but don't quote me on that. But then there's a, there's an adult program and a, and a lot of other programs that are for different groups of people that are happening. There's another area that we talked about the other day, I was, we had a short meeting, clean energy as it relates to all aspects, areas, programs, and, for example, busing. We, we, we listened, we listened to a presentation a few months ago from an organization that leasing buses, I can't think of the term, not gasoline, but you know what I mean, clean energy.
Natural gas.
Yes, no, not, I don't even say natural gas. Is it? Have you, are you aware of this?
Well, some buses are, are being run on that, and there are also electric buses. I don't know about your district, but that's what's out there.
And finally, pursuing new grant opportunities. It's a real strength of the school. I guess like a lot of organizations, it's about people first, obviously, but it also comes down under the antem money, 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 and that's where the grant writing is so important to the school. If you want to come up and visit sometime, and I can help set something up, let me know. I would love to take you. I wish, you know, I realize that this is summer and people, a lot of people are on vacation. I wish, I appreciate you inviting me to be here, and if you'd like to see the school anytime, just let me know, that's all.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Just on the admission process, did we get anything that showed what the new admission process, overview of what it's going to look like?
I think generally, they've sent out things over time, but as Bob mentioned, it's not until another school year.
I think that that would be interesting, just so that we're aware for when the, when parents ask about the admission process. If Heidi has a write-up, she can give us a link to a website. I think that would be great to have available. That's for the admission process I'm talking.
Let me talk a little bit about admission. I don't, are you aware of how many students we send to the Aggie?
From Essex?
It runs around 15 to, it's been running around 15 to 16 students a year, and obviously, it's a, I can't think of the word I'm thinking of, but as compared to somebody, some, a city like Peabody or Beverly, you know, we just don't have the population that they have, so of course, they send more students to the school. The big, the biggest towns and cities are Peabody, Danvers, believe it or not, Beverly, and Salem. Those are the four that account for many, many other students. We're in, we're in a category with Manchester. In fact, I think we send more kids than, than Manchester does, Hamilton, Wenham, Foxford, places like that. But we, the good news is, we have eight students this year coming in as freshmen, so I don't know how that's going to work out as far as projecting it, but as they work through the school, through those years, the four years, and we have seven, eight, nine every year, that'll put us up in the, you know, 25 to 30 area.
And Bob, I'm sorry, so you're saying we have eight freshmen starting this September?
We have eight freshmen. We had 15 total, I think, this past year of freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors, and very similar number last year or the year before. So I, you know, eight is, I'm pleased with that. When it comes to how it affects our budget, this gentleman right here could tell you more than I can about that.
No, that's, I mean, that is a huge increase as far as I can remember from my years on the committee, for just freshman year started, so thank you.
Okay.
Annie, do you have any questions?
Thank you for inviting me.
You're welcome.
No, thanks.
Thank you. Tess, would you like to join us with the Council on Aging?
Hi there, thank you.
You're welcome.
I am delighted to report that the Essex Senior Center is busier than ever. The FY '25 statistics show a dramatic increase in participation and services. We had a total of 11,682 attendees at our various events throughout the year, with 448 individual seniors participating, which means 33%, 33% of Essex seniors participated in at least one program at the center. I am extremely proud of what we have accomplished this year and want to recognize my colleagues Jennifer Weston and Alina Franklin for their extraordinary contributions. The Essex COA would not be the special place it is without them. The Friends of the Essex Council on Aging also play a significant role in the success of our programs with their financial support, and we really cannot thank them enough. In addition, our FY '25 volunteer hours totaled 3,448 with a monetary value of more than $50,000. For perspective, the total hours of paid staff equals 2,650, clearly demonstrating we could not function without our volunteers. They, too, are extraordinary. During FY '25, we were excited to take advantage of a grant secured by the Town of Essex to work with UMass Boston Gerontology Institute on a townwide survey, and we're pleased the participation rate was above 22%. The results of that survey, shared at a previous select meeting and, I think, still available online, have provided some insight and direction for our FY '26 programming. In particular, we will be focusing on housing issues, aging in place, and improved awareness and communication, and have... issues, aging in place, and improved awareness and communication, and have already begun implementing changes in response to the survey results. It is my hope and that of the COA Board that town officials and departments will use this survey for future planning and forecasting. It is important to note that in approximately three years, the seniors of Essex will represent 40% of the entire Essex population. That, to me, seems to indicate there will be a significant impact on a variety of town services and finances, and that impact should be considered by all departments, and we're happy to coordinate and collaborate with you. It is wonderful that we are growing. I think our Pickering Street neighbors might think that we have outgrown our space, especially the parking spaces. I think it's time that we at least begin the process of researching what would be involved in securing a larger senior center in the future. I think it's between the population growth and the fact that we're kind of bursting at the seams makes it inevitable. Our COA Board is committed to planning for the future of the Essex Council on Aging, and I would like to thank them for their contributions and commitment. We are looking forward to a great year and really appreciate your support. And I do want to add, in terms of grants, Ann Buckley is our grant liaison, and she is researching a variety of opportunities and will coordinate with the Select Board on pursuing those.
Wonderful. Annie, do you have any questions for Tess?
No, thank you though.
I did want to mention to you Tess, because we had talked about the emergency, residents in need type of situation.
Mm-hmm.
So I did have a conversation with the police chief. I have not had a chance to talk to the fire or to the Board of Health, but it does seem like we could probably do some more research on that.
Right.
And look at the pros and cons of what we can do legally and what we can't do.
Right.
So I do want to let you know that we are, you know, I was, I did reach out to them to try and see where we stand.
Super. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Do you have any questions?
I don't.
Okay, Tess, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'm sorry, Amy, I'm going to pull Michelle up since she's been here since the beginning. Michelle?
I think she's the last one.
No, Amy's online.
Oh, she is, okay.
Hi, Michelle French from the CPC Committee. So, I first of all, I want to thank Brendan and Pam for their assistance as I take on this new role as Chairman. It's a learning curve for me, and there's a lot, there's a lot involved with the CPC Committee, when the CPA funds. So what we've been working on, we had a meeting in June with the committee, and we had some concerns of how things were being run, so we voted on a new chairman, which is myself, and I brought up the meeting schedule, and so we've decided to meet quarterly. Our next meeting is September 10th, but we will, we will have to have meetings in between once we get some projects in, and we need to interview the, the people that want to do the projects. With the projects, we are implementing a new application process, and we have kind of used the Hamilton-Wenham's, their process, and so we've got that, we've got that in process. Brendan is helping us with that, and in our September meeting, hopefully we can vote on that. And what it consists of, it lays, it lays out exactly what the, what the people need to do for the project, and then there is an application that comes to us to see if it fits in, in the buckets. So, and then if it does, then we bring them in for an interview, and then we get their information with budgets, you know, anything involved with the project that we need to know, and, and then we'll vote on it. The next thing we are working on is cleaning up the projects that are out there. There are a lot that are already completed but are still either in process to say completed, but the money is still in their project, which needs to come back to us. So that's a project we need to work on, and by doing that, we need to talk with the people who are in charge of the projects. If they're complete, then I need to, I believe, I need to, we need to get it put on the town, for the town meeting, because it, we have to get it voted by the townspeople to bring the money back.
Yeah, so in the case where it was fully expended, that's self-explanatory.
Yep.
I think there will be some situations where town meeting vote will be required, but we'll also talk with town council to see if the project proponent declares that it's done. Is there some way that we can do it administratively? So we'll look at all those options together.
Perfect.
Now, if she does want to have it for the November, she, this would need to be done by what time? September?
Well, right now, I know Michelle's researching all the open projects, and there are many, so it's hard to say, you know, exactly.
So it might not be November, it may end up being May?
It might not be, depends on.
And it might be a couple in November and more in, in May. It, it's, it's going to be a process, so we'll do the best we can.
Yep.
You know, with timing. And then the only other thing that I really have to say is, we do have some interest, well, two things. We do have some interest in some new projects for the, the Essex Shipbuilding Museum. Natasha's reached out to me, we're going to meet when she gets back from vacation. She just wants to go over the new process, and I said, well, we don't have the process in place yet, so do what you've done in the past, for now. And then I know the Housing Authority is looking at window replacement, which brings me to the fact that I know that the COA had sent me an email asking if we could get a generator through CPA funds for the Housing Authority. And from what I've found, no, we can't. But I'm still, from the research that I found, it's a no, but I'm waiting to hear back from the steward from the CPA Foundation, Foundation, Coalition?
Coalition.
Coalition. And yeah, I think that's, that's about it. You have any questions?
Not, just, just basically on the Housing Authority. So would this be replacing all windows in all five-bed buildings?
Well, we really have to look at this, because in my research, being able to even do the replacement windows, it's not that simple. From the research I've done, the windows have to be leaking in order to replace them, and I don't, I'm not sure that they are, because I know that we, we have replaced the window sills and all that, so I, so I'm not sure how that's going to, to, to come out.
So would the Housing Authority have to hire somebody to do a review of every window type of thing, or how does that?
I don't know.
You don't know, okay.
We don't know. This is just beginning. I brought it to our, our Board meeting last Tuesday, so it's just beginning, we're just beginning to discuss it.
Okay. Annie, do you have any questions for Michelle from the CPC?
Yeah, I know you were waiting for an accounting, and I, you may have mentioned it, so I apologize if I didn't catch it, but did you get the accounting for where the funds stand at this point?
So overall, I'm waiting still, but overall, I do have an accounting of it, and we have a substantial amount of money that we can give out.
Okay, but you're, it will, I just want to make sure that, you know, that we, as the town knows what, what's in the, you know, what we have and what's been spent and what's no longer, you know.
We will.
I want to make sure our accounting is in order.
So we will. So Michaela is working on it, and when we had spoken, we were going to talk in August. So that gave her time to do year-end and, and all of that, and then we were going to talk.
Okay. Thank you, sorry.
Oh, no worries.
The only other thought that I had, so it's not really something you have to do, but a thought that I had, is whether or not you want to put an overview sheet together for the fall town meeting?
Oh, I can do that.
You know what I mean, so that people understand, because I, I know that I had to go into Brendan and say, what can CPC be used for? I went on the state website, but still that's a little bit vague, even like listening to you about the Housing Authority.
It, it is. I love their grid, it does work, but like when you get into a project like the housing windows, I mean, it's easy for open space, it's easy for, for recreation, things like that, but when you get into the Housing Authority, it's not that simple. It's, it's very limited of what we can use the funds for with housing.
Okay.
Yeah, but I, I will do that.
Thank you. I just think it's interesting for people to understand.
Yeah.
It's there, you know, do you have a project?
Well, and that's the thing, we need to look for more projects in Essex. I mean, we have money to spend.
Right.
You know, we should be doing that.
Okay, so I did want to, thank you, Michelle. I did want to just thank the library, the DPW and the Planning Board for right, giving us a write-up that Annie and I can, and Peter can take a look at, and if they have any questions, we can come back to you on any of those. On that, is there anybody else I'm missing?
Amy.
Who?
Amy.
Alva, I'm on the phone.
I'm so sorry, Amy. I, I saw you there earlier, I forgot. Town Clerk?
Good evening, everybody. How are we doing?
Good, how are you?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Go ahead. I'll be brief, it's pretty quiet right now in the Town Clerk's office. Something that I am expecting to be arriving in mailboxes shortly are the inactive cards. Everyone who I did not receive a 2025 census from will be receiving a card that asks if you still live in Essex, and if you do, to please check off whether the address is the same, or if your address has changed, to update it, sign it, and send it back to me. Or if you have moved out of Essex, to let me know that as well, and sign that card and return it. There were about 900 that were sent out, and it sounds like so many because that's every voter that was on a census that I did not receive. So if there's a family of five who are all voters, I had to send out five confirmation cards. So it sounds like a lot, but census-wise, I would say we received probably all but maybe 400-ish census, which is a, a pretty good return rate. And really, other than that, it's fairly quiet, aside from the parking citations that we've been getting. But it's summertime, so that's to be expected.
And Amy, I just want to make sure that everybody's being adults about those parking citations? You're not being?
Um, you know what, most people have been very nice. There have been a few people who have been cranky, but I think that's something that happens with every situation, whether it's a positive or a negative. So I would say that on the whole, everyone has been very well behaved.
All right, thank you, Amy. I'm going to let Annie ask if she has any questions.
No, I'm outside, thank you.
Do we want to recognize that Val's on the phone, I mean, on the call?
Sure, she has something to say.
Hi, Val, I see that you're on the call. I just want to make sure that if you have, if you wanted to say anything, that I give you an opportunity.
Uh, thank you, hi. We have two grants that we're working on with the Planning Board, is the Technical Assistance Grant for looking at the downtown district and the MBTA zoning, which we'll be talking about at the November town meeting. And the other project is working on, with the Open Space Committee. We just started the process of updating the open space and recreation plan, which we'll be working on through the coming year.
Okay. And let me just make sure I get this, so one of the grants is for the downtown?
Yeah, we have a Technical Assistance Grant, which is helping us work with MAPC to look at our downtown district zoning, where we have our MBTA overlay district.
Mm-hmm.
And we need to make a tweak in order to fit in to the state's requirements. We found that there was a glitch in the matrix when we submitted a couple, actually probably a year or two ago. They are only getting to the review process in the last several months. And we're working with MAPC to come up with a solution that will fit well for Essex and also satisfy the state, and we'll be bringing that to the fall town meeting.
Okay. Annie, do you have any questions for Val?
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
On that, I don't believe we have anything else on our agenda, so I make a motion.
Alva, this is Kate Koch, I'm on the phone.
Oh, someone's on the phone, who is it?
Kate Koch.
Oh. Kate, sorry about that, so from the school, thank you.
Yep. So obviously, our big highlight this quarter was the fiscal year '26 budget.
I'm going to, Kate, I'm going to ask you to hold for one second. Joan, can you make that a little louder so we can hear it? Kate, if you can just try talking a little closer to your mic to see if that helps.
Yeah, how is this?
Much better.
All right. So our big highlight of the quarter was the fiscal year '26 budget, which passed at both town meetings and at the ballot here in Essex. It was approved by 93% of voters at Manchester Town Meeting, and the override portion was approved at the ballot by a margin of just shy of two to one here in Essex. So thank you to the community members who took time to learn about the budget process and came out to, made their voices heard at the ballot and at town meeting. We always appreciate hearing from everyone, even when they raise hard questions. That helps us to think more about the difficult work that we're doing. School year ended smoothly, some highlights from that, our boys tennis team won the state championship. The girls team also had a great run, they finished second in the state. We had two groups of eighth-grade students who attended and presented projects at the state civic showcase at the Edward Kennedy Institute in Boston, and several of our Essex students had the opportunity to present their projects to peers from across the state there. The Essex Elementary Building Committee is continuing their work. They're in the process of hiring a designer, and their next meeting is tomorrow night at 7:00 PM at Essex Elementary. Those are public meetings, if anyone wants to go and listen. Our designer will be hired and onboard to start the school year, and then we will have community engagement opportunities throughout the course of the year. We've also hired an interim principal at the middle school. Her name is Mrs. Elizabeth Taylor. She comes a ways back from Beverly, where she was a principal and assistant principal for over a decade, but most recently by way of Andover, where she was the interim principal for two years, both at middle school and at high school level. So hopeful that that sounds like a great fit for us and will help us to think a little bit further about that position going forward and what that model will look like. Over the next quarter, we will be spending some time reconciling the now finalized state-level budget and the education appropriations with our fiscal year '26 budget, and then upcoming potential obstacle is continuing to monitor the status of our federal grants. So based on what we know right now, it could impact our fiscal year '26 Title II grant, but that is for mentoring and professional development, that's not directly student-facing. And at this time, IDEA, which is our largest federal grant, does not appear to be impacted. Our next school committee meeting will be on August 19th, and at that point, we will be sharing the closeout of fiscal year '25 and fiscal year '26 budget update to report on.
Okay.
That's all I got for you.
And I'm sorry, can you just, August 19th is the school committee meeting?
Yes.
Wonderful.
You'll want to check that schedule online, because we have a workshop portion, and then there'll be a budget, sorry, a business meeting portion, so.
Thank you. Annie, do you have any questions for Kate?
I don't have any questions, but I want to clarify that tomorrow's SBC meeting is at 6 o'clock.
Oh, thank you.
Sure, I, I think you had to send out a clarifying thing, so it's at 6 o'clock, and three designer, we received three proposals.
Great, looking forward to seeing that play out.
So Annie, I just
Anything else?
Thank you, Kate. Annie, did you want to add anything more to the school building? Annie, did you want to add anything more to the school building?
No, but tomorrow should be an interesting meeting.
Okay, so I'm going to move on to reminders, which is the next Board of Selectment meeting will take place on Monday, August 4th at 6:00 PM, third floor of the Town Hall. And with that, I will make a motion to adjourn.
She'll move.
Roll call vote, Inga Harrow, yes?
Cameron, yes, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Take care.